All right, peers, we're live on Zoom and YouTube.
Great, thank you. Hereby call to order the April 10th, 2024 meeting of the Rockbridge County Planning Commission. You know, the roll call, Commission Member Hennessy, I'm here, Commission Member Kramer,
Here.
Commission Member Sandridge,
Here.
Commission Member Whitmore,
Here.
Commission Member Beebe.
Here.
In addition to citizens attending the meeting in person, citizens have several options to view or participate in the Zoom meeting webinar as described below. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. One, to join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar, the link is available on the county website to copy into the address line on your browser. Two, to join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website, webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. This time, we will proceed with the meeting and will begin with citizen comments. This would be anybody that has something that they would like to speak about that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone physically present to speak?
There's a handful of people who've signed up for those comments. This is anything, this is anything for pay not paying that I form the agenda. They would like to make general comments and find a commission for nothing that's not what you do that. If you could come up here.
If you'll come up, please.
The General Districts.
And there's some audience member having trouble hearing, so we can.
Okay.
Yep.
My name is Tony Tyree. I'm from the South River District. I live on 24, 2143 Irish Creek Road. My general comment is that the zoning laws are meant to protect people like us. It's already been one special exception to make granted, and that's enough. You have to draw a line somewhere. That's what zoning laws are for. They're not to be warped around anybody's individual preference. Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Do we have anybody online that would like to speak?
There's anyone online that would like to make a comment, please use the raise your hand button, and there's no one online, so it's fairly easy.
Great, great, thank you. Agenda item three are the minutes from March 13th, 2024. Do we have any discussion about the minutes? They look like they're pretty good, so we need a motion.
A motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye, and the motion passes. The minutes are approved as submitted. We're now ready for board reports, and the staff will begin with the Board of Supervisors' report.
Uh, yes, on March, at the March 25th, 2024 Board of Supervisors' meeting, they approved the Lapsio application for a commercial dog grooming business as recommended by the Planning Commission. And then also, they can approve the rezoning application that's associated with the Godfrey and Lampford property. That was forced 12 acres, give or take, on Maury River Road. That was approved as recommended by the Planning Commission. The TCO did not hold a meeting in, in March. We are, excuse me, in April. We are anticipating a final review of the Wawa at the May meeting. Wawa is essentially still working with VDOT, Virginia Department of Transportation, on some entrance, finalizing the entrance permits. And I think they've done everything with the public service authority as far as revisions to the plan on sewer and water connections. On March 20th, 2024, the Board of Zoning Appeals met. As discussed at our last meeting, they approved, the Board of Zoning approved, Board of Zoning Appeals approved the Sutherland front setback variance from the traditional 65-foot front setback to a 50-foot front set because of topography and outrock, rock outcroppings. And that was associated with Lot 21 of Longview Meadows. The Solar Committee held a meeting last night. We're still, in my opinion, we're still making good progress on the draft ordinance. We're going to start talking about in the next, I'd say, a month, a month and a half, having a joint. One idea we've had is having a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors, all members of Planning Commission, and the members of the Solar Committee. And so that, that date is, is to be determined, but, but we are, we hope, I think it's the correct statement, Mr. Whitmore, that we hope we, we're going to have one or two meetings, you know, one or two more meetings, and then have some draft ordinance for y'all's consideration. As far as the Community Development Committee, they met on Monday, March 18th. Essentially, they discussed the last Planning Commission, the zoning text amendments for food trucks and restaurants. We were successful on, Office Community Development was successful in making a preliminary application for smart scale funding. I think I mentioned that at last meeting. That's associated with the intersection of Econo Lane and Greenhouse Road and Route 11. And the growing pains, if you will, we've seen with some new commercial development there. And so we worked with the Timmins Group and essentially have made an application for a bona fide right turn lane coming out of Lexington on Econo Lane, a bona fide right turn lane coming out of Econo Lane, going back to the interstate, and then extending the taper lane, the left taper lane, turning into Chick-fil-A. And so all of those, based on the Timmins' work, work and the existing traffic counts they had, those were all warranted and needed improvements, if you will. And so again, the preliminary application was due on April 1st. We met that deadline. And the, the, the formal application, the finalized application, I should say, is due on August 1st. So we're, we're working towards that goal with a, with a couple of different moving parts. On March 18th, the Community Development Committee talked about the land use chapter, which of course is on our agenda tonight. And then again, joint work session with the Planning Commission Board and Solar Committee. Our next meeting for this Community Development Committee will be held on Mar, Monday, this coming up Monday, the 15th.
Hey, great, thank you. We're on to item number five, Louis W. Hamilton Jr. and Kendra Hamilton, Black Bear Trail, Vesuvius, Virginia, 24483. Application for a special exception permit to develop and operate a special event venue in the agricultural and limited uses A1 zoning district. We have a staff presentation and an applicant.
Yes, I apologize, this TV is not working, but Mr. and Mrs. Hamilton, Louis W. Jr. and Kendra R. are in attendance with their son. Their address is 14, excuse me, 1647 Magnolia Avenue, Buena Vista, Virginia, 24416. Have made an application for a special exception, exception permit to develop and operate a special event venue. The properties are highlighted in magenta here, owned by Louis W. Hamilton Jr. and Kendra R. Hamilton are located off of Black Bear Trail. You can see Black Bear Trail here, essentially running parallel to the property line. That is a private road. The properties are located on the east side of Irish Creek Road, further identified as 603, approximately 4.06 miles east of the intersection of South River Road, South River Roads, further identified as 608 and Irish Creek Road. The properties are located in the agricultural and limited use district. I'll put on the zoning map just to explain the surrounding zoning. Uh, again, in the A1 zoning district, agricultural and limited uses, that's going to be the light green on the map. Per section 603.03-13 of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations, special events are used by special exception in the A1 zoning district. Properties are further identified as tax map numbers 65-a-6. That is this property here, consisting of 8.12 acres per tax records. Second property that's associated with the application is 65-a-6c. That consists of 5.19 acres per tax records. As you can see here, the tax map 65-a-6c has a single family dwelling on it, identified as 15. Black Bear Trail, Vesuvius, Virginia, 24483, currently utilizes a short-term rental. 65-a-6, again, to the north here is vacant land. A portion of 65-a-6 and a portion of 6c are in the 100-year floodplain. Then we'll go ahead and put that on now. The, and before I go before the floodplain, we were able to go out there, Mr. and Mrs. Hamilton were able to stake off some preliminary corners of the structure. Those are the preliminary corners of the, the structure. Mr. or Mrs. Hamilton will explain further of what, what corners or what sections are in the floodplain and what that, what that proposal is to do in that portion of the floodplain. As you can see, the dark green is the conservation zoning district here. That is National Forest and the Hamilton property border the National Forest, the east and private property to the north, south and west. West, of course, is across Irish Creek Road. Would just like to point out, in addition to the two parcels that pertain to the special exception application, the, the Hamiltons also own three adjacent parcels, which would be located in this one here that has 40 Black Bear Trail and 80 Black Bear Trail, 80 Black Bear Trail. The mapping is obviously a little bit off here. We started to look at that. With that being said, 80 Black Bear Trail is, is associated with the, with the campground permit. That was previously approved by the Board of Supervisors for a glamping tent. It also has 40 Black Bear Trail, which is a single-family dwelling, utilized, currently utilized for short-term rental. In addition to that parcel, the Hamiltons own these two parcels here, identified, one is identified as 12 Black Bear Trail, existing single-family dwelling there, used a short-term rental. And then finally, uh, the tax map number 65-2-1 is the, is the last piece of holdings of the Hamiltons in the area, and that is vacant land that consists of 4.56 acres per tax records. To be clear, 65-2-1, 65-2-2, and 65-2-2A are not included in the application, but I thought it'd be beneficial to give you an overview of the entire Hamilton's holding in the area. The properties are located in the South River Magisterial District. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. and Mrs. Hamilton and to review additional details of the application. And I can keep my G I, what the points up there, or would you like your presentation? Uh, I'll put the points back up there to continue the discussion on that. With that, turn the floor.
A quick history, we purchased the first property about 16-plus years ago. It was an old trailer on it. We tore it down and we built the first structure, 15 Black Bear Trail. And since then, we started buying the properties as we could and remodeling the houses, turning them in short-term rentals for us to create a tax revenue. We wanted to do a wedding venue before COVID hit. When we applied for the building permit, it went to zone-in zone and kicked it back. We didn't have the site distance for the bridge. At that time, we met Alvin Trout with VDOT. He come out, found the bridge site and said it was capable at that point. Well, COVID hit and we just kind of died down. Since then, our daughter has got engaged. She's getting married May of next year. So it kind of rekindled the flame. What we're wanting to do is build a barn venue with a porch. So the two points in the flood zone would be under a shed roof, then the barn would be back off of that. We're willing to get with the surveyor and find the 100-year floodplain in Buena Vista. When we built our restaurant, JJ's, we had to be a foot above flood elevation. We've got a lot of room that we can build it up, taper it down, so we're not really concerned on that part. You know, my wife's in a catering business big. She does a lot of weddings every year. She goes to wedding shows, so we kind of end the game. They're pretty low-key, soft, not, not a big party crowd carrying on. You know, we do several in this county from a seclusion, the Big Spring Farms, the House Mountain, well, we don't do House Mountain Inn, but been around them. And it's a pretty good group of people. And we all have our opinions. I respect my neighbors, even though they're here against it. They got their opinion and we have ours. We've took a piece of, multiple pieces of property that was in really rough shape. 16 years we've rehabbed it. We've made everything nice. People stop on the road and comment, man, you got it looking good, how nice it is. And anything we normally touch, we try to make it right. So we're not going to this thing halfway. We already own the bridge beams to build a state-of-the-art bridge of 50 feet long, three foot tall, 16 inches wide. So the big part for us is done on that part, especially with approval from VDOT. The, the studies from VDOT in the report that Chris has, you know, says the, it can handle the traffic for the road. We just want to keep moving forward. That's what we want to do.
I would just like to want the catering side of things. I'm very familiar with the venue. In working those events and working weddings there from early in the day until the end of those events. You know, I, I just want to point out a few points that I know that the neighbors are concerned about and say how we would address it. Number one, I know they're concerned about lighting. Venues are romantic, very low lit. It's not going to be any light lighting or anything like that. It would be very, very with the scenery of the park. That's one of the reasons we wanted to do this. As well as, you know, as far as using. Venue tempers following, I had a bit of problem following the whole. We feel it is a kind of a natural progression of the property and we have homes there that people have some. However, you know, and I put down on the application that we were wanting to have. Be up to 250 people. Majority of the weddings are anywhere from 7500 to 1500. We just didn't really want to limit ourselves until maybe one or two years if it was. And as far as the rates, with it only being about four miles of Irish Creek, I mean, it's a venue that I can look at. Rates are much smaller. And handle this sort of. Really feel that it would not be hindering our community, the batting.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think as we go through, if we have some questions, we may pull you back up for those, but. Do you have anything else to add? Are we ready to?
Well, prior to open the public hearing, I just would like to recognize that the Office of Community Development has received letters from the following people. Mr. John Painter, Mr. Jane, excuse me, Ms. Burke, Ms. Rhonda Caldwell, Mr. John King, Mr. Luke Tyree, and Ms. Georgia Pippin. Then also, of course, the, the, as far as the public hearing goes itself, when you come up, please state your name, Magisterial District. Limit your comments to three, three minutes. We do have a timer here, and all comments are addressed to the Planning Commission. It's not a dialogue between the applicant, I think. So, so yes, ma'am, I think we're ready for the public hearing.
Okay. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing. I know we have several people here that would like to speak, so.
The first one that has signed up is Mr. Cliff Frost, I believe. Sorry, I couldn't, I was having a hard time. Mr. Tom, would you like to make a comment? If you could, if you could come up to the microphone, no one can hear you on Zoom if you don't talk right into the microphone. No, you're fine.
But I know they have those short-term rentals, right? And they were talking about not being able to hear and everything like that. I can hear the people talking across the creek if they're at a loud voice. So, you know, in my opinion, you take a group of people, it's going to be a racket, and that's all I got to say.
Where, where are you located? Do you live across the street?
Right directly across.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I apologize. Scared screen to go back to the view. Thank you, Mr. Tomlin.
Okay, thank you.
Denny Vance.
Yeah, Denny Vance, I live in Fairfield. I hunt up the creek on my family's land. I fish on Lou's land, and I ride a bicycle up there. And I just wanted to comment on the road. I'm no VDOT expert or anything like that, but there's been several fatalities on the road. They had to redo the bridge down the creek. That's the only two guardrails we have on the creek, to my knowledge. We need, everybody drives on the wrong side of the road, even the state police and deputies. If you've ever been up Irish Creek, you'll know us. Everyone can agree on that. The reason why they drive on the wrong side of the road is because we have no double yellow lines. The roads are narrow, in my opinion, and we also have no white lines on the sides. We also have no caution signs for the bad curves where the head-on collisions happen. My stepmother was in a head-on collision, and my wife's cousin, Jamie Smith, he was in a head-on collision on Irish Creek a few years ago, and there was a fatality associated with that. So I'm just saying, whatever y'all decide today, there will be increased traffic. And with the increased traffic, I think you're going to have increased accidents. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Kathy Tomlin, I believe, followed by Tony Tyree.
It's Kathy Tomlin. I live at 34 Long Rock Lane, Vesuvius. I live on Irish Creek, directly across from the Hamiltons. My biggest concern is the traffic because the road is treacherous already. We've got trout season. We've got bear season, deer season. Bicyclists that come down from the parkway because the parkway is, there's an exit that comes off the parkway that's three miles up the road. So we have parkway traffic and all of those other things that I've mentioned. And it really, it's going to be so dangerous. I'm sincerely concerned for my, my whole family lives on Irish Creek. I mean, we've got a pretty big family, and it's, there's going to be more accidents. You can't, it wasn't designed for that kind of traffic, the volume. So that's my biggest concern.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Tony Tyree, followed by Mary Frazier.
Thank you. My name's Tony Tyree. I live in South River District, and I'm here in opposition to this thing because the roads do not support it, noise pollution, the light pollution. What really concerns me the most with all these guests, all these rentals, there's no municipal water source. All the water would be had to pump to the ground, every bit of it. What's going to happen to us when our wells go dry? Our property values will be zonked. Our property values will be degraded anyway. We, we have water. I've talked to Mr. Sladen and in the state of Virginia, if somebody moves in next to you, drills a well, your well goes dry, you have no recourse. Literally high dry. And with hundreds of guests, 365-day-a-year operation, more rentals going in, I don't think the groundwater will support it. I think it's a real problem.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate you.
Uh, Mary Frazier, followed by Zachary Frazier. Okay.
I'm Mary Frazier. I live in Fairfield. I agree with the road conditions. Like my great aunt said, we all live pretty close up the creek. We see each other on a lot of holiday occasions, you know, on a pretty regular basis. So my concern is with the road as well. There's been a couple of situations where I've been on the creek driving up and almost get hit, hit head-on on, just in the daylight. So my concern would be the increase in traffic as long, as well as all the several fatalities on that road. So just take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Zachary. Okay, Tim Whit.
You know, y'all talk about venue, I understand. Venue, venue is plural. This is, he's already got rental property. He's making money off of, which is good, but you talking about a venue that can hold 250 people. And venue is open 24/7, year-round. I mean, you can house, you know, weddings, whatever, you know, it's cool. It's not just one venue, you know. It's going to be multiple. And they've explained, you know, the traffic hazards. I mean, there's bicycles up there now I work for every day. I'd be scared, you know. But, you know, just the increased volume. And then, you know, he's getting his money. I understand, you know. A lot of people's got their griefs about, you know, it's the American life, you know, make money at other people's cost. Like I said, you know, y'all, if y'all authorize this, can you say the tax thing will go up this year, next year, or because of this venue? And like I said, he's already renting property as it is. And can you say it from my perspective?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
There's a few on here I can't read. I apologize, but the next one is Betty Tyree. Okay, John Vance.
Hey, guys, how are y'all doing? Number one, obviously, I'm a member of the Vance family, and we've lived here, you know, for the last 30, 40 years, almost now. Just a couple of things. Obviously, we're here to kind of sway your ideas on, on what to do with this. Y'all are the ones who make the final decision. First things first, just some things that I'd like to lay out there. I work at a music venue, Lime Kill Theater over here in Lexington. I'm the site manager. The noise is a legitimate concern. We get complaints very regularly about Lime Kill, and we have to abide by the curfew, the sound curfew. Cleanup after an event is very important, and, you know, you got to take that into account when you're running an event. And ultimately, you know, parking, where is everyone going to be parking at? And I just think that it would be very important to take all those things. And whether it gets passed or whether it doesn't, if it does get passed, just keep that in mind, that those are other problems that are going to come up that need to be addressed. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And there is a Tomlin, maybe Casey Tomlin, there's Tomlin that likes to speak. Okay. Uh, that is, that, that there, I think there were some duplicates signed up twice on both sheets, but with that being said, we can recognize anybody else that'd like to speak at this time.
Anybody else like to speak?
Okay.
Mr. Sladen, you said there, we don't have anybody online.
Let me check. You might just pass that along. Mr. Sanders briefly, but then to the table for file. There is, there is no one who has joined us online. If you haven't already, yeah, thanks for. You could state your name, Magisterial District.
Isabel Vance, Fairfield, Virginia. And on top of what my family member was saying about trash cleanup, you have some really amazing wildlife that you really don't see many other places in an Irish Creek. I'm trying to specialize in wildlife and animal studies right now. And with the traffic mixing with wildlife, trash, when things get away, and I really am not sure that it would be too good for the ecosystem that we have up there. You know, I mean, bears already getting to people's trash and stuff. It's hard to say whether it could attract dangerous wildlife actually with that much or scare them away with loud noise. And I just don't think it would be good, not only for the people, but for the animals as well. And that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. Anybody else? At this time, so, Mr. Slade, did you, you already gave the list of names of people?
I did, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So with, there are no further comments, we will close the public hearing at this time, and we will bring it back to the board for questions and clarifications. I think we need to. I think we need to talk about the conditions as well, because there are some questions I have about how many events they're planning and things like that. Events they were thinking about having, and, you know, some questions about parking and that kind of thing, so.
So I'd be happy to read the draft conditions.
Okay.
If you'd like, so someone, one of the comments was that the planning commission has the final decision. To be clear, the, the planning commission has an advisory role with special exceptions, meaning that the planning commission would be making a recommendation. Regardless of that recommendation, it can still be forwarded to, it would still be forwarded to the board of supervisors. That is a separate public hearing and adjoining properties. There'd be newspaper ads, just like it was with this one, certified mail to all the adjacent properties, that type of thing. The only way that it would not go to the board of supervisors would be if the Hamiltons withdrew the application, essentially. With that being said, the special event venues are not an uncommon special exception, if you will. With that being said, staff has drafted the following conditions that could be utilized for this special exception application. And so these are common conditions that we, that we've utilized in the past, if you will. They could be expanded upon or, or subtracted, if you will. So there's a lot of blanks in here, and that's what the planning commission would like to talk about, potentially talk about, I should say. Number one is the permit is limited to no more than blank special events per year. That would be a cap on the number of events. Substantial compliance, number two, excuse me, number, number two is substantial compliance with the concept plan prepared by the applicant titled Irish Creek Venue Pavilion Construction Layout and Overview dated February 28, 2024. That is the, the construction layout and overview that was provided in the package. Number three, events will be limited to a number of maximum, excuse me, limited to a maximum of blank attendees with no more than blank vehicles on-site for events. Event managers, event manager or managers shall be on-site during all special events. All site activities will be concluded by blank PM on blank through blank. And it goes on to say, no special events will be held on Sunday. Number five, adequate off-street parking facilities and traffic controls will be provided. No parking along Irish Creek Road, again, identified as 603. And stop signs shall be installed on the property at the entry of Irish Creek Road. Number six, alcoholic beverages not, will not be self-served. Number seven, all trash taken directly to landfill and not a collection center or county green boxes. Number eight, any amplified music must be within a closed structure. Number nine, lighting shall be in compliance with Section 1303.03, general lighting requirements, and Section 130304, general design requirements of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Number 10, no aerial fireworks or gun sloots shall be permitted. No open-air fire shall be permitted by attendees. And number 11, can, final condition, draft condition that could be utilized if the planning commission chooses to do so, is approval contingent on County Building Department, Virginia Department of Transportation, and Health Department approvals.
Thank you.
And I, briefly, I would like to note, there, there's of course, Black Bear Trail is an existing road with an existing bridge over Irish Creek Road, as Mr. Hamilton stated at the, during his, his portion of the presentation. That existing bridge does not meet the site distance required for, for this type of venue. So he has met with Mr. Trout, and that was essentially during the campground, special exception application. And, and that, the Hamiltons would have to work for, with the Virginia Department of Transportation to, to find an adequate either low-volume or moderate-volume commercial entrance permit. Of course, as shown on that construction layout, the, excuse me, construction layout and overview, there is a new proposed bridge that is close to the existing Ford. I believe it's just downstream from the existing Ford.
Can you show that on the screen?
Sure, absolutely. This is the, what is referred to as the construction layout and overview. Get everyone oriented. Looking over that shoulder, this is the Irish Creek Road going up the mountain. Essentially, heading down, down the page, if you will, is heading up the mountain. The existing Black Bear Trail and existing bridge is located here. The existing short-term rental is located on 6C. And then the proposed bridge, or what's called new bridge, is located in, in this area. This area here.
So how far is that from the current bridge, then? It's yeah, and that's going away from South River Road, right, going up. Okay, so, so that's up around the curve or on the curve?
But it's not the site of the Ford, is it where the Ford is, or just, just downstream from the Ford?
The, the existing Ford is located, correct me if I'm wrong, the existing Ford is located approximately farther up?
Yeah, it's around the curve, isn't it, the Ford?
This is the existing Ford, this would be the new bridge, so to stop share and start sharing this. The, the existing Ford, this is the Conner Residence, I believe, 2020, 2049. The existing, existing Ford is located somewhere in this area. And then the, the proposed bridge is, is approximated the Conner Residence.
So, another question, what's the, gonna be the weight limit on the new bridge by VDOT?
By VDOT doesn't necessarily have the standards for the bridge itself. With that being said, we, we would work with the Department of Emergency Services to verify that's adequate for fire EMS apparatuses.
The current bridge, if you're coming in and you cut the corner, yeah, right rear tire on some of our cars is gonna go break down, because there's, you got, you got three feet of no rail. I mean, it's, it's straight, you know, you got concrete like this going in, and then the railing starts. The back wheel, right wheel of a car doesn't trail to the front wheel.
You're speaking about bridges we use now?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, you know, great, new bridge, weight limit. You know, you get a fully loaded Tahoe or a support bridge, it's gotta hold a lot of weight there. Also, I mean, this is the other thing I would see where the closed bridge is gonna be, is this, it's gonna have a tilt going up over the creek, right? I mean, coming from the low land.
Try to keep the embuckment down lower, to set the beam low to where it's not the big end clam.
Right, it's, I mean, it's not gonna be a big, but it doesn't take much, but if you got coming out with a high beam lights and it's dark, it's gonna go straight into their house, isn't it?
One of the things I want to talk to Mr. Trout about, if we get through this process, is angling the bridge to where that wouldn't be a problem. The Connors came over and talked to me Saturday at one of my places. The Connors have no concern with the venue, the bridge is their concern. And we had a long talk. And I don't want to be a bad neighbor, I don't want to do anything to hurt them or, or anybody. But, you know, it's kind of not fair to let us develop our land too, if we go through the proper channels and you guys vote for it, and the board votes for it. But from what I was told years ago, we bought the property from Skip Ramsey, we have the only, might be another one now, Army Corps of Engineer Ford on Irish Creek. It was truly done through the Army Corps. You know, I reckon it's the site distance thing, but I don't, I don't, I, I've one time thought about just building a bridge right there and spanning the creek and getting it up in air, you know, if we could meet the site business. But I've got to get Mr. Trout back up there again, to talk to him about that. But by angling the bridge just a little bit, which wouldn't change really the entrance from Irish Creek Road, wouldn't hurt the Connors at all. And I would do that, I would try to do that, because we can spill out anywhere on that eight acres to go to where we want to. You know, and over, and within the plans, we, we have plenty of parking we can create. We can create a ginormous parking area, a handicap parking area. Trash, we will have probably like the bar cans you see somewhere like Gatlinburg or Pigeon Forge. You know, if you go somewhere like that and see the volume of cars coming out of the mountains, they do it there. And, and we don't anticipate having that many cars. As she said, you know, 100, 150-person weddings, which mostly do at Big Spring Farm or somewhere. And we can't operate 24 hours a day, it's restrictions, as Chris said, it's noise restrictions.
So while you're up here, do you have an idea of how many special events you would want us to put in that?
Put down a specific number? We don't really know what to expect. And I, you know, I guess my question would be to you guys, well, what are the other venues?
And here's what I told the Connors, I said, you know, you're looking at it wrong, you're thinking about that bridge, we're gonna build a beautiful bridge, I mean, it'd be nice, it'd have gates, that probably has a keypad that opens and shuts. And I said, we'll utilize that bridge, because we still gonna use our other bridge down, down the way. And the reason we hadn't put that guardrail, if you mentioned, sir, is because I'm still wanting to pour concrete and gentle that into the Irish Creek Road, we just hadn't got it done. But, you know, I told the Connors last week, I said, we might use a bridge 30 or 40 times a year, and that will be for these events, that's what I told them. Now, I can't see the future, I mean, the wedding shows that she sets up for catering at, and you see people, you know, trying to hustle their events from all over Virginia. How many, how many do they? I mean, if you did one, one a week, it'd be 52. I don't see that happening, because it's, it's winter time, you know, three or four months of the year. So we don't quite know.
You were also talking about having like corporate events and things like that, so.
Those would be like 20 persons, they're not gonna be, you know, friends likely. These are all speculation, you know. Things that we'd like to see the property used for. But as far as for it being a seven-day-a-week operation, none of these venues in Rockbridge County or even surrounding areas you know, I don't we don't want to be shut down where we can actually do it two or three days a week, because we don't know what your customers' needs are going to be. We'd like to be able to accommodate them as your business needs. But, you know, we want to keep that area beautiful as it is, and that's all we have done since we've been there fifteen years, to free the property. And honestly, it should improve everyone around this property, because of what we do. We care deeply about that.
The amount of trash that I pick up and my men pick up on a weekly basis, more than on Irish Creek, is unreal. The beer cans, the beer cans is phenomenal. They get pitched on our property all the time. And so we ain't up there yet with the wedding venue, but it is people traveling the road drinking beer all the time. So
And on top of that, trash and things that people are concerned about. Caters are responsible for moving every bit of that trash from the venue that night. I have to take an extra vehicle with me, in order to remove every bit of food trash. So we are used to taking care of these things. And also, the other businesses that we have within Rockbridge County, not a single one of them has any trash. That's something we take very great pride in, taking care of our property and making
So back to the number of events, because we do have to put a number in there, you know, I'm thinking about, do you figure 50, 52?
Forty, forty to fifty.
Okay, I mean, I think we probably ought to stick with 50, because I'm thinking about, even if you did it half a year and you did Fridays and Saturdays, or, you know, something like that, so.
And one of the other things too, we, we run a very fast-paced life, we own multiple businesses. I was on Interstate Today sweeping over in Covington, I was scared I wasn't gonna make it back to get a shower. But Irish Creek for us is our retirement home, homes. We, we're staying there right now this week, I'm going there tonight when I leave. And we wanting to wind some things down where we can have a venue like this, where we can just set up on the creek and cook a hog, or do whatever, and enjoy what we've worked for all our life. That's what we want.
So as far as the maximum number of attendees, I heard 250, but then we were talking, I mean, I think that you were.
I mean, if it was a concern for the county, we could be fine with 200. But I, I would like to have it at 250, but I, I am willing to back that down.
And so then how many vehicles would we?
I put in here 75, I think, on there.
I think that's a high.
I think that's high.
So as far as the number of parking spaces, I'm looking at, you know, what you've drawn on here, do you have an idea? I mean, you've got plenty of space then to have 100 parking.
We, we could put two on the parking spaces if we want to, we have plenty of property.
And then as far as, it's 10 o'clock at night, what you're thinking about in the evening?
Typical venues in Rockbridge County that I work at, noise ordinance, I believe, is 10:30. So most of those events are winding down at 10 o'clock, and folks have to be leaving at 10:30. Then everyone has to be outside by like, that's me, I'm everything, I have to be quiet. And as far as like the alcohol restrictions and that kind of thing, all events that we work, we cut off every guest and have a last call about 45 minutes prior to those events leaving. And every one of them varies, but, you know, some of them might end up at 8 o'clock. It just depends on that Friday room or whatever event you're having, that's what their day plan is, that they have to be done by 10:30, and things happen in the block of it.
And so, and then we're gonna put in there Monday through Saturday, because you want to have the flexibility, if you wanted to have something on a Tuesday night for a corporate event or something like that.
Since COVID, we've learned that people get married during the season, that happens quite frequently. Might be a micro wedding, 30 people, but, you know, work schedules and things like that, people are much more flexible. It's not the traditional always Saturday wedding.
And so I think probably, is, Mr. Sladen, is 10:30, or is it 10 o'clock, which, what, most of the ones that we've been?
Viva is gonna pull up an example of that, I do have some, you know, the, the special exceptions as stated in my portion, that we know this, this was or is a relatively common application process. And so we, we have some, in fact, it looks like we have two of them on similar acreages to this one, at 10 acres, if you will. I believe the property total is 12, pertaining to the application is 12. So we have a couple at 10 that were previously approved a while back, and we have one at over 2,500 acres. So they, they vary per property. As far as the, there are some, earlier on in the process, if you will, 10 years ago, exceeding 10 years, there's several venues that don't have a vehicle limit or, or event limit. But more commonly, it does have an attendee limit. And so one of the 10 acres was at 100, and the second one at 10 acres was at 150, as far as attendee. With that being said, there was no vehicle limits or a number of events limited there as well. I think, I think the number of events came through more recently, when there was concerns about, you, you know, it's not uncommon for some of the larger ones that have, there, there's one, at least one venue in Rockbridge County that has two facilities on it, and it's not uncommon for both of those to be going on at the same time, essentially. With that being said, one of the common conditions is, well, and I can pull up multiple ones if needed, but one pertaining to one on Borden Grant Road was all site activities, so be included by 9:00 PM on Monday through Thursdays, and 10:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays. No special events will be held on Sundays. And then, that's the one that pertained to the, the hours of off. Uh, and then, uh, that's the one that pertained to the, the hours of operation. And if need, again, I could pull up other examples as well.
Madam Chair, just to clarify from a legal point of view, the, the list of the special exceptions, we don't have to include all of them. So it's, it's up to the planning commissioners which ones you expect to adopt and you could add other ones too.
Sure. So would the nine o'clock on Monday through Thursday work for you guys and the 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday? That, okay. So make sure we get it, get it right. Any other questions from other planning commissioners?
Yeah. Uh, what's the speed limit?
55. For the Alvin Trout with the state, since it's not posted, any state road is 55.
That's what I thought. That's pretty fast coming around there. I mean, I sat by the bridge pointing towards South River, 30 minutes. And there were a couple of trucks that almost hit me there. And, you know, that's, at night, it's not going to be a problem because the sun, you know, the headlights, you'll be able to see them and coming around there. But that is really fast, getting around that curve, coming up, coming down. I mean, I swear, this couple of these farm trucks, I don't know how they can do it, but they're going 60, 65 around the front of that curve. It's amazing. It, it's just amazing. And I, I would, if I prayed, I'd be praying for some people out there. Uh, and that's not your fault that these people are driving. Somebody needs to enforce that and that stuff. That's just the, uh, three times I've been out there, uh, it's been fast. I mean, it's like Mari River Road too, no different.
Adam, do you have anything?
No.
A question down here?
Now, the, the dress, the only concern I have or the only question I have is.
Agree.
I was thinking more like 175. I mean, I know that you all can always come back if your business grows and you want to do, um, occasional larger events. I mean, I'm thinking 200, just a, a big number, you know? Like, like you said, the examples that Chris gave were 150, 175. And, um, I, I think 200 just seems like a big number. And more equals more, everything. I mean, if you, if we approve it, the board approves it and you want to come back again. And I think that's how the process works, but, um, maybe a proponent of 175 max.
I'm sorry, public, public, uh, comment is over, so we can't do that, can't open that back up. But do you guys have anything else to add or ask? Right. Um, so basically we need to decide if we want to make a motion to recommend approval or you guys have any other comments?
I don't have any. I think, uh, we have the same as we treat the other venue applicants and these exceptions that we've discussed with these, uh, 50 special events per year, 175 attendees. Concluded by 10:00 PM on, uh, weekend or on Sat- Friday and Saturday and then Monday through Thursday, 9:00 PM. If that's consistent with the other venues, I don't feel like we should finalize them. I will make a, make a motion to approve it with those, with those items.
And to be clear, the, the, it would be beneficial to, to. Yes, and I will add, I, I apologize by failed to add Department of Emergency Services to number 11. So if you could add that, uh, the contingent of, could approval contingent upon building at the original, in your, in your package, the statement says approval contingent on county building department, Virginia Department of Transportation and Health Department approvals. Uh, it would be beneficial since we're talking about a proposed bridge. Uh, and I've had, been in conversation with Chief Ramsey, uh, the director of, uh, Fire and EMS, uh, Chief Ramsey, if you will. Um, and so he's aware of it. They have been to the site, but with dealing with a new bridge, it would be beneficial to, to add them, include them into that approval as well.
Yeah, assuming everything else is allowed. When I say that, the bridge is allowed, building permits are good. I know you got the septic. Assuming all that normal stuff is approved. I've made that assumption, but it's worth adding the bridge to this, I guess, as well. Bridge approval.
Well, just Department of Emergency Services and that's the aspect that that's, that's how that would, that's the yes. Yes, sir. They would be looking at the, uh, essentially could require a engineered certification on the, on the weight limit if, if, if that's required.
So maybe you've got the motion in front of you to read.
Read the whole thing?
Yes.
Including all the 11 pieces?
Yes.
It would be beneficial.
Uh, I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the special exception permit to Lewis Hamilton to develop and operate a special event venue and agricultural limited uses, A dash one zoning district for LDR 602.03 dash 13 on 13.31 acres on the east side of Irish Creek Road, Route 603. identified as tax map, tax map number 65 dash A dash six and 65 dash A S six C. Improved with the following conditions. Permit is limited to no more than 50 special events per year. And compliance with concept plan prepared by applicant titled Irish Creek venue pavilion. Instruction layout overview dated February 28th, 2022. Events will be limited to a maximum of, I like David's recommendation, 175 attendees. No more than, let's finalize that. What's, did we agree on? Have we talked about the number of vehicles to be?
Uh, we did, and it was 75.
Be appropriate for 175 attendees, I guess. 75 vehicles onsite for events. The event manager shall be onsite during all special events. All site activities will be concluded by 10:00 PM on Friday through Saturday and by 9:00 PM on Monday Thursday. No special events will be held on Sundays. Adequate off-street parking facilities and traffic controls will be provided. No parking along Irish Creek Road, Route 603. Stop signs shall be installed on the property at the entry to Irish Creek Road. Alcoholic beverages will not be self-serve. All trash shall be taken directly to the landfill and not to county collection centers or county green boxes. Any amplified music must be within an enclosed structure. Lighting shall be in compliance with section 1303.03, general lighting requirements and section 1303.04, general design requirements of the county Rockridge Land Development Regulations. No aerial fireworks, aerial fireworks or gun salute shall be permitted. No open fire shall be permitted by 10 years. We will continue on county building department, Virginia Department of Transportation, Health Department approvals. And Chris, do I need to add one for that?
Department of Emergency Services.
Approval of Department of Emergency Services?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Oppose.
Well, that, that did pass with a three to two.
Correct.
So that, the, okay, fair enough, fair enough. I just want to make sure. So the tentative date with the board, so again, um, while everyone's here, I'll just go ahead and say this, that the, uh, planning commission has recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors. The tentative date for the Board of Supervisors will be Monday, May the 13th. And it's held at this meeting room. Uh, the meeting starts at 5:30 with all public hearings at or after 6:00 PM. Again, in order to hold that public hearing, we will be required to, uh, do certified mail to all the adjacent, adjacent property owners. The, the zoning action pending sign will remain up, uh, and then the newspaper ads as well. Uh, so I just wanted to say that as well.
Thank you.
Yes, and I do have the list in the certified mail, the, the return receipts that we have. And, and we talked about that. We, you have a property in between you and the Hamilton's property. That's why. Sure, absolutely. And that, that's the purpose of the, as we talked about, that's the purpose of the zoning action pending. You know, there, there are some situations where there are landowners extremely close by, if you will, uh, that aren't legally adjoining property owners. We do use commissioner revenues records for legally adjoining property owners. And that's the purpose of essentially the newspaper ad, uh, and then also more particular, the zoning action pending. Is that, that's, that, that's obviously a, uh, invitation to, to get involved, if you will. Uh, so, so. Uh, it was actually in, it, it was, it was put up on the property on the other side of the bridge incorrectly. And so we went back out there and removed it. Yeah, understood. Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for being here as well. We appreciate your attendance. Um, next on the agenda is zoning text amendment discussion. Can you discuss on revisions to the definition of restaurants and providing for restaurants associated with the country general store?
Uh, we have, we thought I could stand it, send it to you, but I have to keep it. Yeah, if you, we can make a quick copy. We can, we can make a quick copy. So I got two pieces of information. One, uh, one is the, the existing information that was passed out at a previous meeting. In fact, I'm not even sure if it's Sandra or if it's the DB was here when we passed that piece of information out.
All right. So the two, the, the one thing that I'd like to, uh, focus on, uh, the reason that we're, we started this conversation, if you will, we have a, a landowner in Rockridge County that's interested in opening up a, a general store, uh, and would like to have a restaurant component of it essentially. And so what you have in front of you, uh, is, is sort of a, of, of the, the immediate fix. If, and, and through the process, you know, we, staff has related, relayed that to y'all. And it didn't seem like it was an issue of, of providing that, the, the red language in the ordinance that would allow for a country store, uh, to have a restaurant. And it really, it should just say a restaurant may be operated on premise, period. Uh, of course, it's going to provide meals to the general public.
Yeah.
With that being said, the second one is the definition of a restaurant, section 60, I excuse you, it's 302.170, uh, is the current definition of a restaurant. So the, the, in, in my opinion, you know, the current definition of a restaurant would fit in well with the, with the zone, proposed zoning text amendment for the, the general store. Uh, but obviously what has happened is, is this conversation, rightfully so, I should say, has essentially morphed into, uh, you know, staff's traditional, um, uh, traditional train of thought, if you will, or traditional, uh, exercise that, that we treated food trucks as a restaurant. And that is, uh, I agree, that's, that's, it could be extremely problematic, uh, based on our existing definition of a restaurant. Because the food trucks obviously do not fit within the existing definition because it states any building in which for. That would go well with a country general store. Of course, a country general store, uh, would not be allowed, uh, you know, under current interpretation, if you will, uh, would not be allowed to go into a country general store. With that being said, you know, we do have a couple of different, a couple of different paths forward. Uh, if you would like, uh, staff could obviously advertise this zoning text amendment for, for upcoming planning commission. But we could talk about that also, uh, additionally, uh, later in this discussion. So the other piece of information you have in front of you is, uh, some excerpts from, uh, other, um, essentially code of Virginia and other localities that have, uh, in my opinion, flushed out the mobile food truck, uh, mobile food vending machines or food truck or, or vending vehicles, I should say, or food trucks. And so the one that I like, uh, that, you know, when in reviewing them, the one that, that I find most fitting is essentially, uh, King, there with the here. Uh, King William County. There, there are some things in King William County that I really like, uh, a- as far as, and in my opinion, the more we dive into this, uh, that they are two different uses. You have a restaurant, a traditional brick and mortar restaurant, which is one thing. And then you have a mobile, uh, mobile restaurant. Uh, and that's a completely different, um, uh, completely different business, if you will, business model for sure. And so what King William County has done, uh, has, has set up some regulations pertaining to, they obviously have some stuff pertaining to restaurants, but they also had, uh, some, some certain criteria associated with, uh, food trucks as well, or mobile restaurants, as they call them. And so the ones, uh, the, the ones that, 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 you know, there are some of these that I, I'm not sure that, that we would recommend, if you will. Uh, but certainly number one, mobile restaurants must, must obtain a county mobile restaurant permit. And essentially that would be a business license at least three days prior to the initial operation. Uh, you know, they are required a business license, so I'm not sure, you know, how applicable that is as far as the three day period. Um, uh, mobile restaurants must maintain a valid business license issued by the county, valid health department permits, uh, issued uh, by the Virginia Department of Health. Uh, a mobile restaurant may be operated either on public property or private businesses. Uh, zoned property with written permission from landowner. You know, I would certainly, um, public properties, I think, would be problematic in Rockridge County. Uh, so it would be private businesses, uh, zoned with written permission from owner, and that would be modified slightly. Uh, no items shall be sold other than food and beverages. I, I think that's essentially applicable not to have a, uh, you know, other accessory sales, if you will. Um, no music shall be played at, that is audible outside the vehicle. Um, going through other localities, that's actually one fairly common one. We have not had that issue with mobile food trucks or restaurants that I know of. There are some Lexington, uh, some, some restaurants in downtown Lexington that that does have, you know, music outside, if you will, something to consider. Uh, number six essentially is, uh, mobile restaurant vehicles shall not block. And it has several many different things that they can't block such as parking aisles, uh, emergency access fire lanes, um, 15 feet away from fire hydrants, those type of things, or, or fire department connections, FDCs, driveway entrances, alleys and handicap parking spaces. Uh, the vehicle and all accessory structures shall be removed each day. That's certainly something to consider in a business zone. Uh, no signs shall be displayed except for one, those permanently affixed to the vehicle and one A-frame sign and not to exceed four square feet and six, uh, exceed four square feet, as four feet in height and six square feet, uh, of display on each of the two sides and cannot block any passageways. Uh, that's essentially a sandwich board and that's something that we have struggled with as far as Rockridge County and food trucks of enforcing the temporary sign ordinance. We do not allow temporary signs, but this may be, uh, it may be a good, a good way to, to have some A, A sandwich board associated with, with the, uh, mobile food, uh, mobile restaurant. Um, trash receptacles shall be provided at all and all trash refuse and recyclables generated by the use shall be properly disposed of. No liquid waste shall be discharged on, from the mobile restaurant. Uh, no mobile restaurant shall locate within 100 feet of an entrance to a business that sells food for consumption. Uh, and they, they went on to say determined by measuring from the edge of the mobile restaurant to the main public entrance of the restaurant unless permission of the restaurant owner is provided. Uh, no restaurant shall be located 100 feet from any single family or two family dwelling in a residential use. Um, and then this is the one I, this is the one I enjoyed, you know, with modifications. Because we do allow food trucks to go into, uh, essentially farm breweries, uh, you know, and other events, if you will. Farm days was one, uh, one common one that food trucks went to. Uh, you know, I think farmer's market, that, that's what they, uh, that's what they specified here. Um, and I don't think we've ever had that question, but I don't, I don't know how problematic that would be. Especially if, uh, if all vehicle and all accessories are struck. If all vehicle and all accessories are struck removed by the end of the day. So that's something that I'd like to work on. As far as as far as where they would be located, because again, we treat them as restaurants, they can go in existing business zones. Or or essentially. Vents, if you will, and and we do, we do detail that with each application we get for mobile, mobile food trucks. It goes on to say, you know, things about the mobile restaurants and use of generator. That has not been an issue that that we've seen in the past. I I think they're both morally. Most food trucks are adapted with a sort of an R V generator, if you will, that that, you know, are quieter than your normal exterior generator. But something to something to think about at least. That and then it goes on another, another. Non-applicable uses, if you will, the requirements of the section shall not apply to mobile food restaurant vendors at cater events. Events where food is not sold through individual sales but provided as a group pursuant to catering contract with a single player. Again, that's something to think about and expand upon. And then you have a revocation clause there at the end. I know that that this is, this is obviously King William County, where I'm not married to any one of these. I think I think a lot of them have a lot of positive attributes to them. But again, the more, the more we look at these things, the more we're realizing that they are two separate uses and and need to be addressed that way.
I have a question about the, so the truck that's out in front of.
Autozone.
Autozone, like that just stays there all the time. It never has to, I mean, like, do we have any oversight over that or?
I'm not sure we currently do. Now, now I have noticed that as well. I don't think, I think we could enforce it as far as an inoperable motor vehicle. I'm not saying it doesn't start or stop, but I have noticed last time I did look, I I do not think it has valid inspection. So with that being said, I think it is something we could address through the inoperable motor vehicle ordinance. But but as as it stands now, again, it is problematic how we have done this in the past as far as treating it as a restaurant. Because a restaurant are permitted uses of the business zone. So that's something that certainly would, and we're not picking one in particular, but that's certainly something that this new ordinance could could. Pertain to future issues such as.
Right, you know, and I I know there are other ones. There's one out Route sixty. Austin goes to it about every day for lunch, you know. I mean, but it's there. It's pretty much there every day, but it doesn't stay there overnight and things like.
It does or does not.
Does not.
I think it's more, I think it's much more common that it does not stay there overnight. Yes.
But I think it, I think it is a good idea that we do have some. Some rules in place here about those, because I think they're becoming more common.
Yeah, most of the food trucks I have seen do move outside overnight.
Yes.
Yeah, the one that used to be down where Chaos Mountain Brewery was. Down at Natural Grid, it it didn't move. At night, it stayed there twenty-four hours.
Yeah, I agree. Yes.
Right. Okay. So where are we on this with?
Well, what I'd like to do is essentially with this item and the next item. The next item is land use chapter. I've talked to y'all, some of y'all, I should say, individually about having continuing this meeting to a work session. And so that would be, you know, we we could, we could try to tackle this as staff and bring something back to y'all next month. As far as draft language pertaining to the restaurant component of it and then have a second, you know, draft. A separate ordinance, I should say, pertaining to mobile restaurants. With that being said, you know, it may be beneficial to have some discussion. Or or via email of which which ones of these existing examples. That y'all feel have merit and y'all would like to see in a in a county ordinance. And obviously, which ones that that y'all don't think is is fitting to Rockbridge County.
Looks like it might make sense if we've already need to have a work session about the comprehensive plan, you know, the land use chapter. Couldn't we just knock it out of that instead of a bunch of emails flying around about that?
Sounds good. Sure. And so one thing, one thing I will add. You know, again, the the whole diving into this, which is a good idea in in multiple different sections of the current land development regulations. I I do think this is a worthwhile exercise. With that being said, if if y'all would like to, if y'all would like to proceed with a public hearing associated with the general store. And add the language, a restaurant may be operated on the premise, period. That would be the zoning text amendment. And that does work well with the existing restaurant, the existing restaurant definition. So there's no, there's no need for, in that particular case, in my opinion, there's no need for the next step that we're chatting about.
So we're not looking at doing any kind of mobile restaurant.
They are not.
On site there.
That's correct. This would be a, this would be a traditional restaurant as as we define it.
So would you change the definition of restaurant from any building to like the other ones anyplace?
Well, in this particular one, yes, I do think, I do think it would be beneficial. To to have that discussion, but for the country store, it obviously works in a in a building setting.
We don't need to worry about changing it before we change this general store ordinance three oh two point nine five. Because we're just saying a restaurant may be operated on the premises and the restaurant definition works for that.
In my opinion, yes.
Right. Yeah, I so I I think that we should go ahead and advertise that and. Get that knocked out so those people can proceed with their plans.
Quick question about other jurisdictions. Any jurisdictions separate restaurants? That are required to have restrooms versus the non-food that they have basically three categories. They have food trucks, they have restaurants that are have a restroom, a public restroom. Because they're serving food inside, and then they have the others like, you know, a hot dog stand or something like that.
I think the hot dog stand would probably fall into the the mobile food truck, and so it'd be the building code essentially. That that I think it's correct statement to say the building code would be the one that determines if the if the indoor facility. Needs restaurants, health department and building code approvals. And so it, you know, I've never been to a restaurant that did not have a public bathroom, as far as a traditional restaurant like we, as we define it. The the other one I have not seen, and this may be, this may not answer your question. I have not seen in a, I do not recall seeing in the definitions or the requirements of a mobile restaurant. That that they are required to have restroom facilities.
That would see the separation.
Yeah, I agree. Yes.
The only thing I think is strange on this restaurant definition is a refreshment stand. I don't think a refreshment stand is a restaurant.
It's an antiquated ordinance, you know, yeah. And so that that's one thing that that, yeah, I I agree. We actually have a, we have a definition of a drive-in restaurant, you know, sort of, sort of going back to the. Roller skate days, if you will.
Right.
So I agree. I agree that that the current definition. Can can use some work for sure, modifications, if you will.
We have any, do you need anything else from us on that?
Well, if you do would like to, if you would like to instruct staff to take the proposed public hearing and again. To take the proposed language associated with the country general store, general store, country. We would need a motion to do that, but it's a, and to be clear, we would be adding a restaurant may be operated on the premises, period.
Yes. Okay, do we have a motion to?
A motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
Instruct staff to advertise for a public hearing.
Yes.
Of course, it's just a public hearing, you know, so so we can, we can take public comment and and go from there.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Yes, we're ready to go. Anything else? So I guess we are on to the last thing, which is the land use chapter for comprehensive plan discussion.
Yes, and what I'd like to do, we we have started, we have had an update from the C S P D C switching gears on you. We have had an update with the Central Shandau Planning District Commission. I've informed the the community development committee that Mr. Zach Beard with the C S P D C is going to be at the next meeting on the fifteenth. And and he's going to review the work that the C S P D has done. With that being said, that's the land use chapter. I'm sorry, that's the transportation chapter. As reported in the past, we're working with C S P D C for essentially a turnkey. Transportation chapter. So that is, that is. Percolating well, if you will. Going back to the smart scale application, our goal, you know, our goal was to finish the entire comprehensive plan by by the calendar year twenty twenty-three. With that being said, we're we're, it's it's going to be imperative that we finalize the land use chapter before August first. Of this year, and that's essentially for for multiple reasons. One, it gives us a good deadline to 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 our goal for deadline. And then two, the transportation chapter is going to have some language in support of the smart improvements that that are going to come out of the smart scale. Hopefully will come out of smart scale program. So that has to be adopted by the board of supervisors before we we get additional. Smart scale backing up is a V dot funding program that's a hundred percent V dot funding as a scoring mechanism. And so with that being said, there's more points associated with it if it is supported by the comprehensive plan. So we're 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 trying to get all the points we can. So that's our goal to get the entire. The well, really, the only two chapters that we have pending are the transportation chapter and the land use chapter. We have, since the last planning commission meeting, we have met with the G I S office, had a sit-down meeting with G I S office. Starting looking at some modifications to the land use plan that staff would suggest. We've talked about some of those publicly. But I really think I've started getting down the road and they're starting to make sense to me. But we got into other geographic areas and rather than instructing the G I S office to make these and then present it to you. I think a better. A better. Process would be to hold a work session with the planning commission, have the G I S, you know, the capability of the G I S showing the different layers of the existing zoning. And then the existing land use chapter and just sort of flush out some of those areas and that way. And and this would be, it's obviously a public meeting, if you can have public participation, if you will. But also, we are still going towards the community meetings, having a minimum four community meetings of the community about the comprehensive plan and the land use chapter. I've said it before, I really think the land use chapter is is usually the what you get the most people out for. That's, you know, as far as lines on maps, where the where our suburban service areas, where our rural areas are, that type of thing. With that being said, I also think it's a good idea, similar to the solar ordinance, to have a a point of discussion. You know, a focal point of the discussion and say, hey, this is what the planning commission has reviewed. This is what staff and the planning commission have reviewed, and these are the recommended changes in your magisterial district that we're looking at. And I think that, I I think that, in my opinion, that can help focus the discussion.
Okay.
But with that being said, I know, you know, it's it's hard. It's been, you know, it's been hard for staff, if you will, to staff time. And when I say staff, I really mean Bebika, because of course she's done, she's done ninety-eight percent, if not ninety-nine point nine percent of the update on the comprehensive plan. But also, it is also difficult for planning commission and staff to say, okay, well, we've had these special exception applications, we've had these public hearings. Now it's eight thirty, let's break out the mapping, you know, so so if we could. It it it's my suggestion that we continue this public hearing, I'm sorry, continue the the public meeting to a date and time and location certain. And then then we can get the G I S open and and really focus on the land use chapter first. And then if we have time, we would, we can talk about the mobile food truck. If if the work session between now and the next regular scheduled meeting, only a lot of case enough time for the land use chapter. Staff will certainly work on the on the food truck as well.
We can do that by email.
Sure.
Yeah, we run out of time.
Yes.
Do you have an idea of when you would like to do it?
I don't. I have a picture of the calendar of this room. So if y'all, you know, I don't, we're we're open, staff is open as far as if y'all would like to do it at at the seven o'clock hour, five o'clock hour or during the day. You know, during the the end of the day, that's completely up to y'all. We are somewhat flexible. You know, with with other meetings and whatnot, obviously. So if y'all want to throw some some dates and times out there, one. It has been getting harder and harder to get meeting space in this room, so I did take a picture of this month's calendar. And I can tell you if this board boardroom's available. Maybe four o'clock. Okay, so four o'clock, what, of course, we're on. Bear with me here. We are on the tenth. Are y'all, what would y'all like to shoot for next week or the following week? Following week, we do have a board meeting on the twenty-second.
I'm out of town next week right now.
The the solar committee is on the twenty-third?
Yes. Yes, yep. It's Ari on the books for this or?
What about Thursday?
Thursday, the twenty-fifth. The the city council's in here from four thirty to six thirty, but it appears that the extension room is open. So we could utilize the extension room in this building.
I can't do the.
The twenty-fifth? Okay.
Isn't that what you just said?
Yep.
Yes. How about Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth works. Twenty-fourth work for you guys.
Okay, and this this room does, does appear to be open that that afternoon.
Twenty-fourth, I'm good.
Four o'clock on April twenty-fourth, Wednesday.
Yes. And that, rather than adjourning, adjourning this meeting. We would want a motion to continue this meeting until the twenty-fourth at four o'clock. To this location.
So moved.
Yes, so we have a motion to extend the meeting.
Not adjourned.
We're extending the meeting, yes, continuing the meeting till April twenty-fourth at four P M in this room, and we have a second. All in favor?
Perfect.
All right. And now for your motion.
No, we're not adjourning.
Oh, shoot.
Yeah.
That's all purpose of Canada.
That's right. We can still leave, though, right?
Yeah, you can still leave. You gotta come back on the twenty-fourth.
All right.
We appreciate your time this evening, as always.